Is called to order on our third special session. Mr. Majority Leader, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, we have a proposed agenda before us, but given that we just recessed from a regular session, I move that we delete items two, three, four, five, eight, ten, eleven, twelve, fourteen, and fifteen, given that this call to special session requires us to entertain the matter to which the Governor called us into special session. So I am proposing that we delete the prayer by the Chaplain, the recitation of Ina Fresi, singing of the Guam Hemen Tramoral, singing of the National Anthem. We do roll call. We approve the legislative journal from the second special session. We delete the communications and petitions. We receive the message from the Governor. Then we delete the reports of standing committees. We delete the reports of select committees. We delete the introduction and first reading of bills and resolutions. Then we proceed to motions. Then also we delete the fourteen and fifteen since we are prohibited -- we're prohibited from entertaining any legislative concurrence in any consent calendar. So that's my motion in adopting this agenda.
I'm just -- I'm having a little -- I'm just trying to think here is that rather than delete, could we waive them instead?
I'm sorry, waive.
Yes, okay. Thank you then, Senator. So on that motion then to waive the following that the Majority Leader has listed, so ordered. So I'm going to ask the clerks to please take roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Ugin. Vice Speaker Cruz. Senator Duennius. Senator Lim Tiako. Senator McCready. Senator Morrison. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Risbisho. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Siniklas. Speaker Wampat. Senator Yamashita. Madam Speaker, there is a quorum. Majority Leader, you're recognized.
Madam Speaker, I move that we excuse the Senators not present for this special session.
No objections, ordered.
Thank you. And the next item, I move that we approve the legislative journal, the second special session dated July 31st, 2013, subject to corrections.
No objections, ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move that the Governor's -- the Governor's letter dated August 23rd, 2013, addressed to you, which outlines the nature of his call for special session being entered into the record under item nine.
So ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And now we're in motions.
We are on motions.
Madam Speaker, given there's no motions, I move that we adjourn this third special session synodically.
Madam Speaker, I do have a motion.
I've recognized Senator --
Point of order, Madam Speaker, there's a motion adjourned.
Madam Speaker --
Senator, wait, please, Senator. I want to make sure that I recognize those of you who want to speak, and right now there is a motion by the Majority Leader. And can you please, I have to address that first if I recognize anybody else, and then... Majority Leader, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I made the motion to adjourn this special session synodically because I didn't hear any motion. So given that there might be a motion, I withdraw that motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Senator. So the motion is withdrawn without an objections ordered. Senator Duennius, you are recognized for a motion.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. At this time, Madam Speaker, I move that we place Bill 1, 3 S, in the third reading file. And I move prior to speaking on the bill, Madam Speaker, that the Governor's transmittal letter be read into the record by the clerk.
We passed that particular section, so what you can do, I would allow you to do then if you -- when you speak, since you're requesting, since you're making the motion to place it on the third reading file, as part of your discussion, if you want to speak on -- for the Governor on his particular letter, because we've gone through that already.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Do you understand?
Sure, I do, and I'm glad I brought my glasses with me today.
Okay. So your motion then, can you please repeat your motion?
Yes, at this time, Madam Speaker, I'd like to place Bill 1, 3 S, in the third reading file, and I'd like to discuss it.
Okay. So on that motion, without any objections ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. At this point, Madam Speaker, I believe it will be basically self-explanatory maybe on this budget, as I read the transmittal by the Governor into the record, and I'll have a few comments after that. Thank you, Madam Speaker. This is the August 23rd, 2013, letter to yourself, Honorable Judith T. Wampat, E.D., Speaker, I mean a tronta dos, and legislature in Guam, 155 Hessler Place, Sagatnia 96932. And this is the transmittal letter from the Governor with this bill. Dear Madam Speaker, I am calling the legislature into special session at 1:00 p.m. today pursuant to the authority vested in me by the 1423H of the Organic Act of Guam. The sole purpose of the special session is for the legislature to consider the attached bill, which budgets the revenues appropriations and provisions for tax refunds in fiscal year 2014. The bill presents a budget that is prudent, responsible, and capable of delivering upon the promises contained within. In the spirit of compromise and cooperation, I instructed the Bureau of Budget and Management Research to construct the budget around the appropriation levels contained in Senator Pangolinan's first substitute version of the 2014 budget bill. This was the version Senators were given time to review and debate on. In fact, so much time was afforded to the Senators on this version that when the recess requested by the minority Senators for further review, the motion was defeated. The following highlight the main differences between the substitute version and the one attached. The revenue are as follows. General fund revenues available for appropriations: $598,815,000. Income taxes net of refunds: $299,125,244. Business privilege taxes at $226,145,462. Federal sources at $65,136,872. Use of money and property at $1,627,655. License fees and service at $4,240,006. And department charges at $1,800,012,516. The provision for tax refunds is $113 million. The appropriation for the hay plan is $8.4 million. This appropriation authorizes the administration to implement the plan for both classified and unclassified services to this level. It also authorizes the administration to implement the plan further should cash sources become available. Senator Munya Barnes, who has been a staunch advocate of the Mayors, has been working to ensure the Mayors and their staff are included in the pay adjustments. This follows calls by Republican Senators to ensure the hay plan is applied to everyone qualified and not just one class of employees. The appropriation level for the cost of living allowances increases from $1,100 per retiree to $1,500 per retiree. We made adjustments upward at the behest of the Minority Leader, Senator Tony Ada, and Senator Duennius. We increased the appropriations in the Department of Education to $219.3 million. This is part of our commitment to improving learning as a direct response to DOE's needs and the advocacy of Speaker Wampat and Senator Yamashita. Item six. We restore operational funding to health agencies so they have adequate resources, and we included funding for critical programs. An additional $3.6 million for Medicaid. This is a local match to avail the program for further federal funding. This is the funding Senator Rodriguez has championed for those in need of medical attention through this program. An additional $500,000 to the Division of Senior Citizens for the Hot Meals Program. This will enable the contractor to deliver hot meals to senior citizens in this program on Saturday, adding to the current Monday-through-Friday schedule. This helps to close the gap in services to those senior citizens in need. I have long worried that the lack of food services to them on weekends meant they may not -- they may have nothing to eat between Friday and Monday. Thankfully, the Republican Senators and Senator Rodriguez advocated for this funding along with me. An additional $468,088 is to adult protective services to provide service to 151 senior citizens now on a waiting list for inpatient services. Senator Yamashita championed this funding. An additional $2 million to the Department of Public Health and Social Services to foster care program as well. We restore operational funding to the public safety agencies so that they have the needed additional resources. This includes $800,000 in funding to the Guam Police Department for hiring of more police officers. I don't need to remind the legislature of the importance of giving the public safety agencies the resources to fight crime and keep us safe. I thank Senator McCready for working with us to bring the funding levels up. We include the funding from the tourist attraction fund that Senator Lim Tiako has been advocating to market the bed and breakfast industry. We included funding from the tourist attraction fund that Senator Morrison has been advocating for improvements in the southern villages and for funding for cultural improvements. We include the doubling of Veterans Affairs Office budgets. Senator Tony and Tom Ada have been champions of veterans issues, and we thank them for fighting for this increase. I look forward to your favorable consideration of my budget request. I ask you to look upon this proposal with open minds, eyes focused on reason and logic, and heart set upon the most vulnerable in our community. Sincerely signed by the Governor Eddie Bazacavo. Madam Speaker, I will continue to review the bill.
Point of order, Madam Speaker.
Please state your point of order.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I just waited patiently for him to finish reading the Governor's message. Now I invite him to make a motion to waive the standing requirement that we go in the committee of the whole.
Thank you, Majority Leader. And you're right, you still have the floor, Senator Duennius.
Madam Speaker, I believe that I'd like to speak on the bill, and perhaps the mover of this request can move that motion.
Point of order.
It has to be done at the time before we continue to proceed with the discussion now, the deliberation of the bill, whether we waive it and then we talk about it on the floor, or we go into the committee of the whole, and then we have a separate deliberation on the bill and bring in the...
Madam Speaker, I ask for a two-minute recess.
Because it's -- before we do that, please, because it's automatic, because it's an appropriation measure, the rules provide that we automatically go into the committee of the whole. So we can't discuss this and then make the motion.
Yes. So Senator...
And that would include the Governor's bill then, as submitted?
Yes, exactly. That's what you're going to be waiving. But that's the only bill, of course, that's on the agenda to discuss.
Madam Speaker, I thank all the members for their collegiality and the respectful discourse, and so now I will make that as part of the rules, motion to resolve into the committee of the whole for the purposes of discussion on this bill.
Wait, your motion is to resolve into the committee of the whole?
Oh. I'm sorry, Madam Speaker. I thought our colleagues were desiring to go in the committee of the whole, so if that is -- I stand corrected on that not being what's being requested here. So I amend now my motion, Madam Speaker.
Would withdraw that first?
I would withdraw that motion, and now, Madam Speaker, I ask to waive the requirement for the committee of the whole for the purposes of discussion on this bill.
The motion is to waive the requirements of going into committee of the whole. Any objections? No objections, ordered. And you still have the floor, and you may continue.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you once again to our colleagues for that correction, and I will proceed at this point. So, Madam Speaker, just in short closing, I will continue to work along with others as they wish to maybe rise to speak on the budget. We were in recess here for a little bit transitioning from the sessions to now the Governor's call to session, so... But I will say that having just a cursory review at this point and having read the transmittal letter from the Governor, I believe that this is a reasonable approach to this budget process. I believe that the discussions contained in the transmittal letter indicate that this budget is, in essence, a budget that we have had public hearings on, that we have had the SES basically approve in terms of adopting levels. Notwithstanding though, Madam Speaker, the whole purpose for which we recessed last week, and I distinctly recall, the purpose of that recess was a number of members on this body to include the Budget Chairman and yourself, Madam Speaker, receiving the letter transmittal from the Governor, anticipating a $9 million increase in Section 30 funding, anticipating that there were members on the floor that had represented a willingness, or at least a willingness to discuss, placing the tax refunds at $113 million as we were in the committee of the whole, and the administration's fiscal team continued to reiterate that they were comfortable with that number and could live with that number. And then, of course, Madam Speaker, the realization too that more than likely it would be accepted by this body, knowing that according to the Governor at this time and his fiscal team, there is a not a current issue with regard to the deficit. So the normal or kind of accepted practice that we've been going through to have the 2 percent deficit reduction in play would also be freed up if we choose to accept that and adopt that, Madam Speaker. So, you know, without the real hard number off the top of my head, those are major funding mechanisms whereby, from what I understand, we were working on together, and also the Governor has chosen to incorporate into the otherwise deliberated budget that we had gone through, public hearings on adopted revenue levels. And so with that, Madam Speaker, I would continue to review and hope that other members would join in the conversation here so we can deliberate on this budget bill as submitted by the Governor. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. On the motion, the main motion, does anyone who would like to speak on the motion? Speaker Pangolinan, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, in taking the time to review the Governor's budget, I continue to find shortcomings, Madam Speaker. I think that, number one, Madam Speaker, I continue to disagree with the Governor that 113 is enough. As I mentioned in the latest reports that we have, the Governor himself has mentioned he's paid out 103. Department of Revenue and Taxation has come back and say, "We've only paid for tax refunds up to March 28." Those that filed between March 28 and next month are not going to have any money left in order to pay them their tax refunds, because we still have processed within RevTax $119 million pending. So if you add 103 and 119, nowhere are we going to require less than 120 next fiscal year, Madam Speaker. And that just means we're going to dig ourselves right back into that hole, which we can't afford to because we can't borrow any more money to fill that hole. Much more even important, Madam Speaker, we have the District Court case right staring the Governor in the face, and, Madam Speaker, we have to remain current, otherwise we face some consequences as we see what has occurred. COLA remains at 1,500, Madam Speaker. I think that we just need to take our retirees like we're taking our employees and other members of the -- and our taxpayers who are paying them on time now, and we want to continue to that commitment, we got to take our retirees at least back to $2,008, Madam Speaker. And so, and I think that is absolutely necessary to help these manamkos who are facing, you know, even greater challenges than we are, who are in the current workforce and have the ability to earn additional money to meet the higher cost of living. So, Madam Speaker, I just think that the Governor's bill does not resolve the issues that are important and that divide this body, and at this time, Madam Speaker, I just move that we place the bill in the voting file and call for the vote.
Senator, I respect, of course, your call to go down, but there's others who would like to speak, so would you?
Madam Speaker, I wasn't aware there were other members who wished to speak, and so I would then allow -- withdraw my motion to call for the vote.
Thank you, appreciate it. Without any objections ordered. Senator Siniklas, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I first like to begin by saying that I really just got this bill a few hours ago, and there were some other Senators when we were discussing the previous budget that weren't comfortable moving forward on a bill that they've had overnight, and here now where the Governor's calling us into special session, and those same Senators are now telling us to consider something that has just gotten on our desk two hours ago. I've been going through it. I really must say that I'm not comfortable at all voting for this bill because I haven't been able to thoroughly review it, but I'm not trying to cop out on that, I just really haven't been able to thoroughly review it. But just in my cursory observations, it looks like something is very, very clear here with this bill, Madam Speaker. It looks like this bill is trying to under-provision for tax refunds, not pay the hay to the employees who are working right now, and pay less to the COLA retirees who've been waiting just to go back to where they were, all so that we can turn on the hiring spigot and begin hiring away because the election year's coming up. I mean, that's the basic thing that I come away with when I look at this bill. I don't see any new revenue sources. I don't see any new real investments. All I see is a difference of priorities. In this bill, as opposed to the one that we are trying to pass, the priority isn't to pay people what they're worth who are currently working and to make our retirees whole. The priority is to tell people who are currently working to suck it up, here's a little bit, but I'm going to go and hire all these other positions because, well, it's 2015. And that's so unfair to our people, Madam Speaker. It's so unfair to our people, and, you know, the Governor's heavy hand on this, and the reasons for trying to shortchange our retirees, to shortchange our employees throughout the government, our public servants, all because you want to go out and hire more, it just makes me very upset. It's not fair. How can you say that that's fair? How can you tell the employee who's been waiting for their raise, their full raise, as much of a raise as possible, how can you tell them that, "We don't have enough money for you, but we're going to hire the empty chair that's next to you? You've been doing that job for the last how many years? Putting in 150% of your effort, but we're not going to pay you 100% of what you're worth. We're going to give you a little bit, and we're just going to try and fill the chair next to you." That's wrong. You don't do that to people, Madam Speaker. You know, when you pay people what they're worth, especially when they give more than 100%, you boost their morale. You increase productivity. You get more out of the person who's learned more and who's been doing more. And I'm just a little surprised here because you would think that philosophically a Democrat would be saying, "Let's go hire," and a Republican would be saying, "Let's control that." But with this budget, it's just the complete opposite. This budget is saying, "Let's not pay people what they're worth because we want to put the money into hiring." And I can understand that if we've been keeping track of the services and we can make a clear case that there is an under-provision of employees, and that's why we need to get more people into these positions. I can appreciate that. That's why in the previous budget and in this budget, the one thing I can agree with is the new police cycle. $800,000 for new police cycle. We budgeted for the one that no one wanted to override. It's budgeted here. It's listed in the letter as something special, but the reality is that that was in what was vetoed. Same with the Veterans Affairs Office. It's listed here as something special in the Governor's budget, but that's in the very same budget that the Governor vetoed. Money for adult protective services, Medicaid, foster care, in the Governor's budget, that's all in the budget he just vetoed. So the only thing that I can see different here is that he just doesn't want to pay people what they're worth because he wants to go out and hire more, because 2015 is right around the corner, and you don't do that to people, Madam Speaker. Pay our people what they're worth. The numbers are almost the same. Very little difference when you compare general fund numbers to general fund numbers in this budget bill, and that for me is just a cursory look at this budget. And so the Governor needs to do his job and get his priorities straight. I thought that we've moved beyond the age of government being a hiring agency. I thought there were certain Senators in this room who had that same mentality. But now, all of a sudden, because it's what the Governor wants, we're all going to come on board and say, "Oh, yeah, it's a good idea, Gov." You either think our people are ignorant, or you think that they're stupid if you think that you're going to be able to pay them less and hire somebody right next to the empty seat next to them and tell them, "We don't have enough money to pay you what you're worth." That's just not right. And for our retirees who've been waiting so patiently to be thrown a nickel and a dime so we can go and hire somebody else? You really do that to our manamko? That's a new direction? That's backwards from the way I was raised, Madam Speaker. And what bothers me about this budget, and what I was going to talk about also in the override attempt, is that not only was the budget that failed to get overridden, the vetoed budget conservative because it was providing so much stimulus money, this budget is only going to go out and hire people. Now, when you go out and hire somebody, sure, you're creating jobs, but that's not the kind of job creation we want on this island that's sustainable. The kind of job creation we want on this island that's sustainable is private sector jobs. And the way you create private sector jobs through stimulus is you raise the pay of the people who are currently working, you don't hire more in the government, and you allow that money to circulate in the economy so that businesses can earn more and they can hire on the private sector side. I mean, that sounds very Republican, but it's good. It's a good way to grow jobs. You don't grow jobs by filling these vacancies because the election year's coming up. That's false stimulus. And what's even sadder is that when you fill those vacancies with the way this budget is structured, you're permanently denying all the employees who've been working so hard carrying that extra load, you're permanently denying them a full hay increase because there's no way you can afford hay with all those vacancies filled. There's no way. And there's no way that you can really get the retirees up to their full COLA when you have all these vacancies filled. We talk about phantom numbers and false promises. The biggest false promise is saying, "Oh, this is going to do it incrementally. I'm going to give you a little now, give you a little later," when the reality is I'm going to give you a little now so I can hire more, and oops. Our people don't deserve that, Madam Speaker. Our people don't deserve to have a budget like this that prioritizes the politics of the next twelve months rather than the sacrifices they've made over the last so many years. Our employees, our retirees. How can we ever move forward when we're constantly repeating the same mistakes? And that's what I just don't get. That's what I just don't get about the governor. He says, oh, this budget's gonna go into deficit spending, the one he vetoed. His numbers are almost the same. And he says, it's gonna go into deficit spending, and we have to get away from that. But his numbers are almost the same. And he makes the case that we need to do things differently, but he's actually the one who's going back and doing things the same. He's gonna go back and turn it all into a hiring spree. A hiring spree because an election year's coming up? That is the same. That is the same thing that, in my short lifetime, I've seen. If you really want to do things differently, do things fairly. You're gonna go back and hire a whole bunch of people and say you're doing things differently while you shortchange the employees who've been working their butts off and shortchange the retirees who've been waiting patiently? And then we're gonna come down here and we're going to consider voting on this? And we're gonna say, oh, this is a good bill? This is a repeat of the exact same thing. Increase the long-term obligations by going out and hiring more and neglecting all the obligations that are accruing. Hay is accruing. Merit bonuses are accruing. Law enforcement pay adjustments are accruing. And the sooner we can get to the point where we're gonna be able to make good on that, the sooner we're gonna be able to say, finally, we kept our word. But no, let's just give out a little, make an empty promise that more is to come while we go out and hire, and all of a sudden, oh, we can't do it anymore. So the governor needs to do his job and prioritize the people. He needs to do his job and pick up the phone and call those two hundred and eighty-four businesses that aren't paying their taxes, that he allowed to get business licenses in contravention to the law, because if he collects that money, guess what? More in the budget. That's why the budget that we pass is so conservative. Not only does it not have the multiplier factored in of the economic stimulus, but it doesn't factor in the governor actually getting up and doing his job and collecting the people's money. We're discounting that because it hasn't happened so far. But if he did it, there's a hundred and seventeen million dollars in receivables sitting out there. Forty million alone in business privilege tax, twenty-six million alone in corporate income tax. If he just got up and collected that money, if he just picked up the phone and made a phone call and said, this is the governor calling. Pay your taxes or I'm taking away your business license. If he just did that, we'd have a forty, fifty, six, sixty-six more million dollars to project and to budget for. But no. It's a government for the few about letting some get away with not paying their taxes and about opening up vacancies so we can hire who we want. So we need to get back to what's important, and we need to prioritize the obligations we have. We need to recognize the hard work of our people. And then we need to move forward, not backwards. Forward in terms of getting more lean as a government, getting more productivity out of our employees, rewarding the ones that are doing all the hard work and keeping the vacancies vacant. Moving forward in taking care of our retirees and making them whole again. And not moving backwards and saying, we're gonna give you a little, knowing full well that all the other things that we're gonna spend on are gonna make the rest of what's owed not possible. And that, Madam Speaker, is in two hours of reading this bill. How much more if we take it home and really scrub through it? So I rise in absolute opposition of this bill. I think we need to get back to our priorities, and I urge my colleagues to do the same. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. Senator on the motion, Senator Morrison.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I, uh, the governor, Madam Speaker, and the administration is doing their job. And we, we, if, if the goal of this legislature is to, is to make the administration look bad, I wanna, I don't wanna have any part of this. Governor, have you read the, the letter to you, Madam Speaker? It's very clear that he's called this session for us to compromise. I agree with the governor, Madam Speaker. We cannot pass a budget that, that we cannot live up to. It's clearly, Madam Speaker, this administration has made good on its commitments. There has been struggles, have been challenges, but it's made good in many of its commitments. It's hard to say that the people of Guam or the government is, is, the workers are doing a good job, yet the governor is not doing his job. Kind of sounds odd because obviously he is the chief and he's in, in charge of these executive line agencies. I agree with the governor, Madam Speaker. As a former director, I understand clearly, serving in three agencies of the over promises and the under-delivering of services within its agencies, seeing right off the bat, a lot of these monies are going to reserve and the, the delivery of services are, end up taking a hit. I see nonprofit organizations, Madam Speaker, with their budgets not able to deliver the services because at the end of the day, it does not get to their accounts or not able to, so that the women won't be able to deliver the services. Madam Speaker, the retirees, the retirees we've spoken to have clearly made it clear that they want to be reasonable with us. And I think the governor, working with the legislature, or some members of the legislature, made it clear that fifteen hundred dollars was reasonable. Madam Speaker, we appreciate that. I think the retirees understand the struggles of this government. With the hay study, Madam Speaker, I was just talking to a few law enforcement officers outside. And they understand the struggles. They understand clearly the phase-in approach, what the governor is trying to do here. Anything, as they stated, anything is better than nothing. So, Madam Speaker, as you can see, what the governor's trying to do is compromise, not just with the legislature, but with our hard-working employees out there. It's a workable governor. It's working. As we see in the prior budgets that this legislature has passed, that he has executed on those budgets. But, Madam Speaker, we don't want to go down this road again and, and provide something to a governor that you cannot, can't execute at the end of the day. And I, again, I was looking down this, some of these items of the, as the previous speakers mentioned, that it's, the numbers haven't changed, but, Madam Speaker, the priorities have changed in a way where the governor is, is trying to meet those commitments, working with the legislature, but through a phase-in approach through the hay study, supporting our retirees, our nonprofit organizations. And I'm not sure if they're reading the same letter or were reading the same letter, but I, I can clearly see, Madam Speaker, the governor is trying to compromise of this body. And I think as we continue to speak on this measure, Madam Speaker, I hope we don't become a legislature just trying to make the administration look bad. We must work with the administration and, at the end of the day, help our hard-working employees out there. So, Madam Speaker, I ask my colleagues to help and get, uh, move forward with this budget as we can start moving this government forward, Madam Speaker. Thank you.
You're welcome. Senator on the motion, Mr. Vice Speaker. You're recognized. No, I have him after you, and then Munia Barnes. Oh, okay, well, not, not a problem, okay. Senator McCready, you're.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Speaker. You know, I, I've listened to this for, for a bunch of days now, and I, and, and I, and I was watching, listening, and learning. You know, this is our first budget attempt. And, um, and I wasn't really gonna say much. I was just gonna let my vote speak for itself, but it, it's hard not to say something when my good friend, Senator from Talapofa and Dedidio, just keeps blaming the executive branch over and over and over again. Our job is not to blame the governor. Our job is not to worry about if the governor's doing his job. Our job is to do our job. Our job is not to blame everyone. We're considered leaders of this island. And all I keep hearing over and over and over again is blame. And that's not how we should conduct ourselves as leaders. It's embarrassing to be sitting here, listening to leaders blame other people. Are we gonna agree on this budget? Maybe not. Like the following speaker said, or the one before, Senator Morrison, the good speaker from Talapofa. We're not far off in numbers. We're just far off in personalities. This isn't about numbers. This is about politics. And if the former speaker knows so much about being the governor, then run for governor. Because let me tell you, if I knew so much about the governorship, I would be running for governor. But I'm eight months in. Do we need more police officers on the street? Who would disagree with that? So the governor appropriates more money, back to the original intent of his language. Eight hundred thousand dollars. Who's gonna disagree? Who are the first people that we call when we hear noises outside? When we something, see something suspicious? We call the police. Everyone in this body calls the police. When something happens to our kids or our loved ones, where do we go? We go to the hospital, the public hospital. What's the governor do? Do you think the governor is so different? He sat in this body for fifteen years. Do you think he's so different than us? That his mindset and his intents are so different? No, they're not. He was in this body for fifteen years before he became the governor. He was committee chair on appropriations. And all of a sudden, now, a freshman senator questions his ability to make decisions? It's embarrassing. And it's wrong. And I think first and foremost, we need to stop blaming people. If we vote yes, live with it. If we vote no, live with it. If we don't get re-elected because the way we vote, live with it. Find another job. But don't lie to the people. Don't make empty promises. COLA, eighteen hundred dollars from eleven. How can you have a total departure back to full implementation? I have family members that collect eleven hundred dollars in COLA. When I went home and told my father-in-law he's getting eighteen hundred, he couldn't believe it. He said, we can't afford eighteen hundred. And you know what? We can't. Do I believe that the government of Guam employees deserve pay raises? Absolutely. But can we go from total departure to full implementation? No way. And to simplify it for the people watching at home, when you're on a fixed income and you're paying twenty dollars a month for your credit card, you don't just stand up one day and decide to pay it all off. It's impossible. Can't happen. But we found eight point four million dollars in the governor's budget to fund the hay study. We found fifteen hundred dollars a month to up it from eleven hundred in the COLA to phase it in. Phase in the hay study. Give partial payment back to the COLA. Three point six million dollars for Medicaid. Everybody in this body runs on public safety, education, on health care. Three point six million dollars into Medicaid. That sounds like health care to me. Eight hundred thousand to Guam Police Department. That sounds like public safety to me. Three hundred and ninety-three thousand to the Attorney General's Office. That sounds like public safety to me. This body has shown time and time again this year that we are tougher on crime. We're gonna have to support those people that put these clients behind bars, or these offenders, or these re-offenders. Education. No one in here would get elected if it wasn't for their proactive approach to education. Two hundred and nineteen million dollars and some change. Five million dollar increase. I don't see anybody complaining about education. But the governor added five million dollars to education. I'm sure nobody's going to complain about that. Public health? Another two million dollars. Adult protective services, that some people on both sides of the aisle advocate for that. Four hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. Senior citizens. We all know senior citizens. Another half a million dollars, so they can eat over the weekend. Is anyone agreeing with that or disagreeing with it? I don't think so. So can we be a caucus of common sense rather than personality clashes? Can we do what's right for the people? Who cares who gets the credit? Whether it's a Democrat or Republican, who cares? If the Democrats do something good, I believe credit should be given. If the Republican does something good, credit is given because we're one. We are a body of one. And if the governor does something good, good job, governor. If the governor is not doing his job, I will be the first one to tell you that the governor needs to do a better job of running this island. But what's been said about his, breaking his promises? I don't see the governor breaking any promises. Ask the people that's gonna get a six million dollar tax refund in, in a couple hours. I don't see any promises being broken. And I'm not gonna sit up here and defend the governor. But I am gonna tell you, I take offense to this body or anyone in this body laying blame on anyone else, whether it's any branch of government or the governor or the lieutenant governor, the Attorney General's Office, anyone. Because we are supposed to lead by example. We are the leaders. People didn't elect us to pass the blame. People elected us to cast our vote, whether it's good or bad. And you don't say when you cast your vote, I didn't know what I was voting for. I wanna cast another vote just because some people didn't like the way you voted. You live with your vote. Madam Speaker, I ask this, this body that we call colleagues to be responsible, to be respectful, to have common sense, but most important, to compromise for the greater good of the people and take our personalities out of it. And if the Democrats come up with a solution for the budget that makes sense, I will have no problem voting for something that makes sense and is good for our people. And if the governor comes up with something that makes sense and is good for our people, then I will have no problems voting for a bill that the governor has sent down to us. Thank you.
You're welcome. Senator Vice Speaker, you're recognized.
Mr. Vice Speaker.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I really haven't had a chance to go through this entire budget, but as is usual, I will go to the one area that I know best and am very concerned about. And I'm really disheartened by the fact that this bill that's before us has cut the juvenile and the adult drug court. It takes it even below the current fiscal year appropriation. And it's three hundred and thirty thousand dollars less than what we had in our bill that we passed day before yesterday. Madam Speaker, last week I was at the District Court Conference and the U.S. Attorney spoke about the fact that the United States is going to have to be more smart in the way that they do sentencing. And yes, I agree with the retiring speaker that we should be hard on crime, but we also have to make sure that we have a way of being able to deal with them when they come back out. Because if we don't have a way of rehabilitating them and reintegrating them into our communities, they're going to be non-productive. And they're going to be the ones that are gonna need to make ends meet by doing the home invasions, by doing the purse grabbing, and all kinds of the insanity that's been going on recently. And I was very happy when we increased the drug court by three hundred thousand, which was a fifty percent increase. Because I finally have the attention of the Superior Court in trying to figure out how we can deal with those individuals who went before the court before the court had the good sense and the vision to establish a drug court and a diversion program for drug rehabilitation. Madam Speaker, this drug court is such an excellent idea that it is actually has been sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce. This is the one thing that the Chamber supports at the court. Every graduation, the president of the Chamber of Commerce is there and several members to log the court on the fact that they are working with these individuals, have tried to work with their drug addiction, and as a consequence have had their arrest diverted and their conviction expunged. As a result of it, these individuals can continue to be employed. Madam Speaker, I can't even tell you the number of people that have come to my office since I've become a member of this legislature that have asked me for a way of either appealing to the governor for a pardon, to try to clear their record because they need a job. And when there was construction work and the construction, fortunately or unfortunately, was only on base, they couldn't because they had a conviction on their record. Those people who had a drug arrest after the drug court was established have had the ability to be able to work through the drug diversion program and have their records cleared. Those who were pre-drug court have these convictions on their record. The court is now willing to talk to me to try to figure out what we can do to either get them back into a program so we can figure out a way of clearing their records so that they can become gainfully employed. The unemployment rate on our island is mostly people that can't get jobs because of their conviction. And I'm really disappointed that we reduced the drug court appropriation in this because as you, all of you have seen in the papers, it's a daily story. But we can't incarcerate them because we're talking about a sixty million dollar prison that we would need to build. We cannot incarcerate everybody. We cannot afford it. We've got to figure out a way that we move along with the Department of Justice and the U.S. Attorney locally to be smarter about the way that we deal with our victimless crimes in this drug area, to try to rehabilitate these people and try to get them gainfully employed so they don't become the burglars or worse yet, the home invaders. And I'm not sure what the balance is on this or how close it is, but the only thing that I'm going to ask Madam Speaker is a motion to amend the bill to return the drug court appropriation to nine hundred and sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars from what is currently in the bill at six hundred and thirty-five oh four.
Can you give us the page, please?
No, I understand. I'm just talking about the one that is nearest and dearest to my heart, Madam Speaker. And the Chief Justice has sent a letter to the governor expositing all his concerns about the special session bill. And you know, I'll ask everybody to have a chance to read it so they understand where the judiciary or co-equal branch is. But just from my cursory view, I don't know. I didn't get it two hours ago. I was late coming back for session and I didn't see this current bill before it came to my desk about thirty minutes ago. And so the one thing that I need to address is the issue of the drug court. And if need be, I'll do them sereatum. But the thing is, is that that's the one that if we're going to try to improve and get our people employed, that the drug court has to be reestablished, brought back up to full strength. And if possible, to deal with my concerns of pre-drug court individuals so that we can clear their records and get them gainfully employed. Because otherwise, we're gonna continue to chase our tail around. And worse yet, we're gonna have to chase our tail around and try to figure out how we're gonna have to build a bigger prison when they can't get jobs and do other things that require them to remain in jail or go back into jail for even more grievous offenses than their initial drug offenses. And I haven't had a chance to...
Mr. Vice Speaker, on your amendment to increase, then there has to be a simultaneous decrease in another area. If we're going to pass a balanced budget. You can't just increase it without decreasing somewhere.
Well, Madam Speaker, then I'll ask to be brought back. I have to go look to try to figure out where I can find it. But I'm just saying, I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. If we're concerned about employment in this community, if we're concerned about the fact that we need employment in the private sector, then this is the way that we can get people employed in the private sector, by trying to get them to be rehabilitated. And if we're concerned about making sure that people aren't recidivist because of the fact that we can't bring them back into the community, and what we're gonna have to do is to try to figure out how to build a prison that's gonna cost us, that may be sixty or seventy million dollars to start with, but when we finally pay for it, it's three hundred. All right, I withdraw my motion and if I need to, I'll get back up.
I'm gonna set this aside and then I'll go on to the next speaker, who is Senator Munia Barnes.
Sisus masi, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, as I was listening to all the retiring speakers and trying to see what we could do to work what's in front of us, I said to myself that as the Oversight Chair on Tourism and Municipal Affairs, which is the mayor's, who I believe are the twenty-four seven responders to everything that they do in their villages, I had taken the time to try and look for what was given and what was exempted and what was put in and what was taken out. And when I looked at the Public Safety and School Education Program, I noticed that there was a decrease. When I looked at the provisions, because the mayors are elected officials and their staffs are unclassified, I noticed that the transfer of employees weren't exempted by the mayors, I mean for the mayors. I also noted that the carryover and the transfer authority that we've given to the governor, usually the mayors are exempted from this provision because that's a separate budget. And we all know what the mayors do for our people. So I'm like trying to see what I can do here to make things work and I just, without having to rebuild the whole thing. Madam Speaker, I want to share with you that as an Oversight Chair of those committees, I committed to working closely with the government agencies. I've committed to working with the administration as it relates to affordable housing and making sure that when we look for a better quality of life for our families, that there was a collaboration and an integration. And I could stand here and saying, "Oh, the governor's wrong, we're right," and all this, but I worked so hard with the mayors. I tried to give them everything that they want. I know I can't. But there was also provision that was promised to the mayors that I don't see in this budget. You know, one of the retiring speakers talked about not giving, that our manamku should understand that if we were to give them and restore what they rightfully deserve, that times are hard. We're giving, or there was a request to give to our mayors and our mayors stopped because there's gotta be parity across the board. I don't see the million dollars that is needed. Now, I'm gonna be the first to tell you, Madam Speaker, that I have come up here time and time and time again to tell you that the mayors and their staff are twenty-four seven responders to all the constituent concerns in their budget, but I don't see that million dollars anywhere. When I called the mayors, and I had my committee call the mayor's office yesterday, I said, "Mayor John, please, make sure that we get the numbers just in case." I don't see it in here. And then they took away the exemption provisions? How, what am I gonna do to tell the mayors that? Then they tell me, Madam Speaker, in this bill, that we're not gonna give them an uncle, the eighteen hundred dollars, eighteen hundred dollars, because they've been suffering for all these years, over ten years, because we needed to make things work? Haven't they sacrificed enough? Madam Speaker, almost seventy years ago, sixty-nine years ago, our manamku, our manamku, suffered the atrocities of World War II. And you know what? After that war, they came back and they worked in our government and they gave. That's not a benefit to them. That's a right that they earn. And we're looking at giving to everybody because we started it. This government started to give back to the people. And then there was talk about giving parity across the board. Then there was talk about giving to the mayors. And then I see it in empty promises. And then we talk about our manamku. "Oh, no, 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 you're getting twelve hundred. We'll give you fifteen, but you don't need eighteen." These manamku are manamku, the greatest generation, the reason why that all of us are here today. May, maybe a couple of you guys, no, all of us, not just, not, there's no exceptions to the people that are in this room. The manamkus that deserve that COLA of eighteen hundred dollars should get it. And if we're gonna be across the board, that's the first one I wanna give. And then I wanna restore the mayors back to what they need to do. I talked to one of the mayors and he said, "No, Senator, there was a commitment that they were gonna give us the hay and that they're gonna do this." I'm looking in the budget, I don't see any of that. Then I look at the Manpower Development Fund. I'm hoping, I'm hoping that the five hundred and twenty-two thousand that I worked with the Tourism Committee with GVB, to give to our own people so that they can go to school and be trained, so we don't have to hire any workers out of this island, that we can hire our people first. Italta. But if, now, they should be the one that should be first. I don't see that. What are we doing here? What are we doing here, Madam Speaker? I made a commitment to the committees that I'm working with that we will work together. And all I can say right now is this is so discombobulated. I keep trying. I'm trying to make ends meet. Madam Speaker, you know what? When we worked hard on Bill Thirty-Eight, all the way, we were saying, "This was good, this was good, this was good for people." All of us were saying that. And I dare to talk to anybody in this room who said it wasn't good. Then all of a sudden, there was media coverage that said, "It's dead on arrival." They didn't even see the bill. But I will tell you the truth. Ask me, as an Oversight Chair of my committees, if I did not talk to the agencies within the government of Guam, I said, "I'm not here to fight you. I need you, I need to give you the resources that you need so that you can help Guam prosper and bring in more resources." You know, I always believe you give to receive. And Madam Speaker, as much as I'm trying, this doesn't look good. When I got the letter from Justice Carbalito saying they short-funded the adult and drug alcohol, and then the indigent, the indigent defense, I'm telling you, the basic form of government to provide to the people is to be able to give them the basic services. That's why we exist. And then we take from those who are most vulnerable. We shortchange them. But my heart even aches more, Madam Speaker, when we can't even give the manamkus the eighteen hundred dollars. Who are we kidding? Some of the, their days are numbered. Give them what they earned. Give them what rightfully belongs to them. I don't know, Madam Speaker. I don't know what we're doing here. All I know is that we worked so hard. And if any agency were called, come back to me and saying, "No, I didn't give you," or "We didn't give you," "This legislature didn't give you what you needed," they're wrong. Because let me tell you, our committee worked really hard. Our staff worked really hard to make it work. And promises were made, and I still don't see it. So I don't know who's kidding who. All I know is that we better think, and the first thing, besides what the previous speaker talked about, about the adult and drug court and all that stuff, that we created mission mandates so that we can make this island a better place, and then for manamku not to get what they deserve? I don't know. I don't know where we're gonna start if we can't even do that. Something that our people need to think about. Something that our people need to think about. Senator Marcy, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. Mr. Vice Speaker, are you ready? Because I don't have anybody else on the list. Senator Esposito, you recognize.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, we all want the same things. We all want a government that reflects priorities to health, education, public safety. We all want a government that responds to the needs of our community. And I think we all want to ultimately do what we can as a body to avert a government shutdown down the road. And thankfully, because in a previous legislature, we reformed the way in which we budgeted for the government of Guam by way of adopting a budget. It's where we required that a budget be adopted or a budget be passed by August 31st. And I want to congratulate the Appropriations Chair again in the Office of Finance and Budget and for all of us to focusing in this past session on how we can transmit a budget to the governor and meet that requirement of law. And given that we have the remaining five weeks, because we don't really have to implement a budget till October 1st, we really have some time here, Madam Speaker, to really digest what the governor wants versus what the Democratic majority has passed, which I believe, a budget that was passed not only by, voted by Democrats, but reflective of what some of the Republican senators wanted. Throughout the budget process, you've heard comments about how Senator Yamashita wanted this and Senator Morrison wanted that and Senator Tony Haddad wanted this. And so it was a budget that was inclusive of all members of the legislature, I believe, and I submit that to this very day. What I don't really like, Mr. Speaker, is how we see someone throw the first punch and then the same person who threw the first punch and caused this fight is now saying, oh, listen, cooler heads need to prevail, we need to calm down here. And then we have people from this legislature rallying behind the one who threw the first punch and saying, it's wrong to blame the governor and it's wrong to point your fingers at the administration and it's wrong to take this approach. And when all we want to do is pass a budget, all we want to do is do our jobs as senators. And I'll tell you how this started, Mr. Speaker. And my, from my perspective is we were in the committee of the whole. There was some discussion raised by a Republican senator on how much is enough to do, set aside for the tax refund reserve. And it was the BBMR director who said, 113 is sufficient. Now, you reduce that to 113 and you fund the hay. Take a million, 11 million dollars and you fund hay. We can recess colleagues and we can play that tape where John Rias was on record telling this body in the committee of the whole, reduce the tax refund reserves down to 113, fund 11 million dollars for hay. Now, fast forward from that time, now we're seeing the governor saying that 11 million dollars is too much, 8.3 is enough for now. And it's the same person who is throwing the first punch by way of press releases telling our people of Guam that tax refunds are being paid on time. First time in the history of the government of Guam, for in a very long time, where tax refunds were paid without having to borrow money. Then we hear reports from the Guam Visitors Bureau Industries saying that tourism arrivals are up, the Russian market has doubled. Then we're hearing administration's press release saying that the finances are strong, the economy is strong. And so if that's the case, Madam Speaker, then why can't we just take care of the most vulnerable members of our community? Isn't that what every society aims to do? Isn't the, how you determine whether or not your society is strong is how you take care of your elderly, how you take care of your young people, how you take care of the most vulnerable members of our community? And really, I'm hearing that it's okay from some of our Republican senators, it's okay, the manamkos are okay with the 1,500 cola? I don't know which circles they're frequenting, Madam Speaker, but they need to look in the eyes of those manamko who have to choose between paying for their prescription drugs or have to choose between paying for their power bill, putting food on their table. We're talking about $300 per retiree and we can't even do that. $300 to some people in this room, Madam Speaker, is not the same as $300 to a retiree living on a fixed income. And if that's what this fight is about, then I'm going to go down in flames. I'm going to go down fighting for what I believe is right. And we passed a budget, the majority of us passed a budget that reflected those priorities. And when it was time to attempt an override, the best thing that we can get from some of our colleagues is have them walk out. And then come back and scold us, scold us for saying, why aren't you working with the governor? You know, so it's, if you want to talk about messaging and if you want to follow how influential this administration has been in terms of messaging, then I say what we did when we passed substitute Bill 38 was to follow his message. And to say, if the economy is really strong, if tourism numbers are really up, if things are really, really good, then let's start with restoring what was once taken away from the most vulnerable members of our community. Now we're seeing that the drug court is not properly funded. And so while we have a colleague who has been focused on trying to reduce the population at DOC and have them comply with the Department of Justice's requirements, what would happen if we don't have a drug court? What would happen if we don't support the judiciary's approach to therapeutic jurisprudence and have these kinds of alternatives available? You know, my colleague who spoke previously, who got up from the other side, who got up and said, this has to be about policy and not about politics, not about personalities. Certainly, I want that to be the focus, I want that to be the discussion, but I want to fight for what I believe is right. And I want to fight for all the hard-working GovGuam employees, which Governor Calvo has gone on record saying that he wants to restore hay. Do we have to recess and open up the Pacific Daily News or the Marianas Variety or play back a KOAM or Pacific News Center story? Where over the last weekend and the days up to the last weekend, the governor shamed us into not taking these available monies and funding hay? And so when we respond to the governor's call by asking us to fund hay and the BBMR directors shaming us into putting hay into the budget, when we do that, what do we get? Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute, now it looks like it's coming from the legislature and it's not coming from the administration. So what we get now, Madam Speaker, is politics, the politics of personalities. Where is the leadership from our respective leader in our respective co-equal branch of government? It's not even about gubernatorial politics because I maintain that he's the incumbent governor and he has the upper hand. He should have taken the budget that was passed by the legislature, to which, to which I believe there was consensus, there was support from both sides of this legislature. There was only one, one final piece of the puzzle and that was whether to bring the 6 million in the tax refund reserve down and then partially fund hay. But if the governor's saying fund hay, then why not? If the BBMR director's saying, take the 11 million dollars? So, you know, based on those kinds of feedbacks, you know, I believe that we were going to get bipartisan support from this bill from the very, very beginning, that we weren't going to have any drama associated with this budget bill. But what happened is they got the call and they were told no. And so the best thing that we can have is whenever things don't go their way or they don't like what they're hearing or certainly they don't have the votes, they just walk out. They walk out when it's time to vote on a bill that represents the priorities of this government that I have to go on record over and over to say that this is one of the better budgets that I've seen over the last 11 years. But before that, I also worked for the Committee on Ways and Means. So even when the current governor was Appropriations Chair, you know, we saw some of his budget perspectives. But this budget that we presented, Madam Speaker, and that was vetoed, it's, I called it a dream budget because it's every governor's dream to have this kind of ultimate flexibility, but yet recognize the priorities of our community. But, but because of politics, it was vetoed. Even though the BBMR director said, take the 11 million dollars and fund hay. So I, how does anybody blame us for not, for not trying to follow the governor's message and trying to, trying to pass something that we believe that he would pass? I mean, we're seeing it when he publicly tells us to do it. Then when we do it, then he publicly tells us not to do it because we're irresponsible, we're playing politics. How much longer are we willing to subject ourselves? And how much longer are we willing to let the administration dictate the will of the legislature? We're a representative democracy. You know, it just baffles me to hear some of our colleagues say, even without reviewing this bill, we should just pass it. When it was time to make the presentation on the budget, what did we get? We got one of them reading the governor's message. Beyond that was, I'm still going to take my time to review this, but I hope my colleagues can support it. When we passed a budget for the current fiscal year and the governor withheld 15% reserves, well, that was his organic act authority. But even at that, even the priorities that we laid out, he decided on his own to do a 15% across-the-board reserve and then he decided what agencies he wanted to go back. Then he accuses us of playing Santa Claus? You go ahead, go ahead and tell the manamko that in an economy that is getting rebounding, that it's strong, when tourism numbers are up, Russian market's doubled, we're able to pay tax refunds on time without having to borrow any money, go ahead and tell the manamko that they're only worth $1,500. And the extra $300 that they get annually, that's $300 a year, not even $300 a month, that they're not worth that extra $300. Go ahead, colleagues, go ahead and face the hard-working GovGuam employees where today they get a press release congratulating them for all of their hard work. But yet, it's not worth giving them the hay study. So we're really after doing what we believe is right and forget about the politics, forget about the credit, then we should have overridden the governor's veto of that substitute bill that we passed, really. Because I also submit to this body that, and I want to recognize the Appropriations Chair for not being political in this process. We could have, when we came up with a substitute version, as was suggested, our party could have done a press release inviting the Republicans to join us. But, you know, we didn't do those kinds of things because we wanted to take the position, which we have, that we were bringing them along every step of the way. And they were. They were. We can go through the substitute Bill 38 that was vetoed and you can actually pinpoint which senator supported this or which senator asked for that. And so, Madam Speaker, you know, I don't support the governor's latest version of this budget bill. It doesn't do enough to reflect the true priorities in our community and that's our manamko, the greatest generation that ever lived. You can't, you can't keep telling someone how much you love them, keep patting them on the back, telling them how much of a great work that they're doing and then tell them that they're only worth $1,500. They're only worth an additional $400 because we don't have the $300 to do it. The same can be said with the GovGuam employees, time after time, how the administration praises them for doing more with less. And I agree with all of these things. But when the BBMR director tells this legislature, there's 11 million there, fund the hay study. And even after the governor's budget bill, where he wants to take us back down to 113 million, as what the BBMR director suggested, we still don't see a full implementation of hay. So instead of running our government by press releases and now trying to legislate via soundbites, I say we really take a look at what this budget is purporting to do and recognizes how it falls short of what our priorities were in the priorities identified in the substitute Bill 38. This idea that these agencies are being short-changed? What the Office of Finance and Budget did and the Appropriations Chair did is they took a look at the current spend rate. And our appropriated levels are much higher than what they're spending today. So the governor's saying that we short-change these law enforcement agencies? Yeah, if you go with what those vacancies were in all throughout the government of Guam. But if you're spending $1,000 a month and on a particular item, even though you budgeted for $2,000 a month, but you're spending $1,000 and you get $1,500, that's $500 more that you're able to spend. You don't say that you're short $500, you never spent the $2,000. And I'm sorry to reduce this budget process to the most simplistic terms, but if that's the way we're going to understand it, then that's the way it has to be presented. And so I don't know, I'm glad, Madam Speaker, that you're allowing us to have discussion on the governor's bill and to state our positions for or against it. I'm hoping that whatever the disposition of this bill is, that we have several opportunities to go back to the substitute bill that was vetoed and think really, think really long, really hard about what that bill does. And if we truly, truly, truly take the position that we don't care about credit or we don't care about politics, then let that bill pass. Let that bill pass, let the governor be the one to hand out the cola checks, let him be the one to say to all these employees that they paid hay, because that's all I care about. At the end of the day, I care about whether the things we do is going to translate into some difference for members of our community, not for the select few, but for the greater good. And so I don't think there's any drama yet. I think, I think we're still able to really, really set a lot of things aside and look at what we passed in the substitute Bill 38. And again, there's no mad rush to having anything done today or Monday or Tuesday or Wednesday or Thursday or Friday. We have the whole month of September. We don't have to pass a budget until October 1st, given what we'd done previously, where we reformed this whole budget process. So it's not like it's September 30th and come tomorrow where we have to pass a budget or there'll be a government shutdown. So I'm just hoping that we, yeah, that we follow the governor's advice and let cooler heads prevail. But that begins with him and he stops throwing the punches. He stops, he stops starting the fight. How does that sound? He has to stop starting the fight and not start the fight and then tell us to stop it. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, Senator Lindtia, who you recognize.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, Madam Speaker, when we go through this budget process, and this being my first one, you know, we're learning a lot. And we started out with the governor's or the executive branch's original budget bill. And then the Chairman on Appropriations, a man that I admire greatly, our speaker from PD, comes out with the substitute version of the bill. And in its truest essence is probably the most conservative bills, budget bill out of all of these bills. And it was a prudent bill, very conservative and left the little room, little wiggle room there to figure out how we can fund certain things. And what we saw with the second substitute of the bill was a complete departure from that conservativeness. And I would think that the Chairman on Appropriations, a man I admire greatly, has the most experience in these processes. When he first substituted that bill, he knew in his heart that this is the prudent and responsible, financially feasible... is the prudent and responsible, financially feasible way to go. And he even left margin of error in there so that we, we could recover from, from funding shortfalls. And yet, the second substitute bill that comes out basically goes on a spending spree and sacrifices the future generations to carry the burden of it. Fully funding hay doesn't represent the ten point nine million dollars that is in the second substitute bill, that only represents the three-quarters. The full implementation of the hay on a full fiscal year is closer to twenty-one million dollars. Could you have afforded it in FY fourteen? The numbers seem to say yes or no, somewhere in between there. But yet we lose sight of the fact that in FY fifteen, and then again in FY seventeen, our debt increases another eleven million dollars. And then in FY seventeen, another seven million dollars, a nineteen million dollar difference. And then we go back and we try and figure out, okay, how did, how did we get so far off from what, what I thought was a workable substitute bill, all the way to a physically irresponsible bill on the second substitute? How did we lose sight of that responsible obligation to our taxpayers? I'm dismayed, I'm shocked. I can't believe that we would just...
Madam Speaker, I'd, I'd like to rise to a point of personal privilege. I don't think my bill was physically irresponsible, Madam Speaker. If you're gonna label the bill that we passed as physically irresponsible, this budget bill has more spending than that bill. So this budget bill that the governor's introducing must also be labeled physically irresponsible.
So Senator, then just stick to, to basically the, uh, the subject of, you know, this particular...
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, nonetheless, I think it still loses sight of the fact that we're, we are not taking into consideration the debt obligations that we have in the coming future. What are we, what we're also doing too is taking for granted these revenue sources that are there to fund these supposedly, that they're gonna continue to exist. And so a full implementation of the hay has ramifications for the, for the entire future generations to come. What the governor pro- is proposing and has always proposed is a phase-in approach to hay. And then we go back and look at the COLA. And we, and we have, we've heard from prior speakers that the bill that was passed was a dream budget. It was a dream budget. It's time to wake up from the dream. It's time to wake up and face reality. Because come the pr- the future years, we're gonna be back in the same place where we were two, four years ago, borrowing again to pay off prior year obligations or tax refunds. And in the first substitute bill, yes, there's a generous, generous cushion for provision for tax refunds. I myself too struggle with whether or not that sh- that number should be lowered. It's, it's tough dealing with this, trying to figure out the right balance, trying to give and take. And the problem is, I'm only one of fifteen, but at the very minimum, I need to voice my concerns and let the public know that we can't just think about FY fourteen. We need to think about all the fiscal years to come and the impli- implications of what a full implementation of hay and a full restoration of COLA, those effects that it could have in the future, considering the fact that the revenue stream, we don't have any forecasted increases of revenue, except the potential of the military buildup. And how long have we been waiting for that? Organic growth is pegged at two point five percent. Fourteen million, our debt alone is going to, into, from fifteen up to seventeen, is gonna increase by nineteen, or excuse me, eighteen million. So even our gran- organic growth may not cover that. So we're, we're, the decisions that we're making today in this budget bill, or in the, the one that failed to get an override, was a full implementation of hay, was definitely a promise that at best, at best, was a cross-your-fingers promise that it'll all work out in the future. And we've done this so many times in the past. This, we have done this from a financial standpoint, we've run the government poorly in the sense that we don't, we're not looking, we're not looking into the future for that. And so when we take a look at what the governor has given us today, it's somewhere in between. It's not the best at either side. It's not gonna work, not everybody's gonna get what they want, but they've come somewhere in between. Instead of a full implementation of hay, they're suggesting a partial implementation of hay. And maybe if those revenues do come in the future, that we can finally get our people to pay that they deserve. I don't think anybody in this room here is arguing that they don't deserve it, everybody knows they deserve it. It's just that we have done a bad job in setting ourself up for success in order to pay it. And I hope that this legislature can start to move in the right direction in order to fulfill that promise at one point in time. But let's take a step back and let's do it prudently and let's exercise caution and, and do as much as we can with not setting ourselves up for failure. This bill is a compromise in the sense that it increases education, and I know that our other colleagues wanted to do the same. But it's hard to do that when you're gonna fund hay at a hundred percent. It's hard to do that when you're gonna fund COLA at a hundred percent. But everybody knows how important education is. Campaign season, it always seems to be the top of the agenda. And yet, right now in this legislative hall, it seems to take a backseat. There were a lot of references to pandering for votes and to, and going into an election year. I ask that we cautiously look in the mirror and, and wonder whether or not a full implementation of hay and, and a full implementation of COLA is doing the exact same thing. We talk about education, and this budget basically is proposing a five million dollar increase in the Department of Education. We talk about public safety. This new budget restores the original executive budget's requests and gives back eight hundred thousand dollars to our police department. I got a text earlier from the Attorney General's office. They're happy with the new budget's request for the Attorney General's office.
Point of information, that's the exact same number that was in the vetoed bill, Madam Speaker.
Well, at least we see the same, we see on the same page there. Adult Protective Services, four hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. Senior Citizens, five hundred. Three point six for Medicaid, and with the federal match, I believe that number may go up to seven point two on the total. So Madam Speaker, we're not far off. That num- that phrase has been used before. We went from one extreme to the other. Right now, we're somewhere in the middle. We're somewhere in the middle. It's not the most ideal on either, the, either way you look at it. It takes away from the conservative approach, but it definitely comes down from the, uh, overrated veto attempt bill, from the most extreme approach possible, basically banking everything on, on crossing our fingers that it'll all work out, down to something that is more manageable. Phase-in approach to hay, fifteen hundred dollars for COLA. And Madam Speaker, we, we need, we need to come together, we need to agree somewhere in the middle, and we can't take these opposite extremes. We're not gonna get anywhere with it. And so, Madam Speaker, there was amendment that was attempted to be proffered on the floor by our vice speaker, and I'd like to ask for a two-minute recess so that we can try and address his concerns and figure out where to fund that money so that we can restore the drug courts that he was referring to. So I kindly request a two-minute recess.
Speaker's back in session. Senator Limtia, who you still have the floor?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to make an amendment on page twenty-six, after line six. After the juvenile drug courts, um, the language would read, "An additional three hundred and forty-four thousand dollars is appropriated." Two hundred thousand from the governor's budget. Fifty thousand dollars from BBMR. And ninety-six thousand from Bureau of Statistics and Plans. And Madam Speaker, that'll address the vice speaker's concern regarding the juvenile drug courts.
On the amendment, on page twenty-six, line six, uh, new language that, uh, "An additional three hundred and forty-four thousand dollars is appropriated and, uh, and that it will come from, or deappropriate the governor's budget by two hundred thousand dollars, fifty thousand dollars from BBMR, and ninety-six thousand from the Bureau of Statistics and On the amendment. Senator Respechon, then Senator Rodriguez, and then Speaker.
Thank you very much, uh, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, if, if, if we demonstrate that this is possible, maybe we can cut some more from that same, uh, source and we can bring the COLA from fifteen hundred up to eighteen hundred and we can fully fund the hay study. And so if the sponsor would yield to a question, is there more monies from that same source to, to fully fund the COLA and the, the hay study?
Senator, do you yield to the question?
Uh, Madam, Madam Speaker, I don't believe the question is germane to the amendment.
Okay, so going on then to the next, uh, speaker.
I guess the answer is, uh, no. And once again, there, he's falling up real short of, uh, what the, the needs are and what the solutions are. And I maintain that, uh, all of these things are, are covered in the substitute bill thirty-eight. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Rodriguez, on the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Um, Madam Speaker, you know, I, um, of course, I, I support the, the move to, to fund, um, what it is, um, this amendment is funding. However, as Oversight Chair of Bureau Statistics and Plans, I wanna, um, ask the author to yield to a question and ask, how is this gonna affect that, that bureau? And where do they propose that this cut is coming from?
Senator, do you yield to the question?
Madam Speaker, uh, I, I believe that the governor, uh, has, uh, plans to properly fund the Bureau of Statistics and Plans, or at least provide cover-over, um, in order to recognize the need for the juvenile drug courts. So I believe that, uh, that they will make do in light of the fact that they are trying to address the shortfalls in the juvenile drug court.
Senator, are you okay with that answer?
I'm, I'm, I'm fine. I think, um, that's, that's the only answer. But, um, I, I'm just gonna state for the record that I, I am concerned. You know, speaking with that, with that bureau, we know that, um, some of the mandates that they are tasked with today, they're already having problems in carrying those out. There's even some initiatives pending in, um, in this body that would require them to, um, to, to take on additional tasks. And so I'm, I'm just very concerned that, uh, any reduction in their budget would, would hamper, uh, what it is they're, they're supposed to carry out.
On the amendment, Senator, uh, Speaker Pangolin, and you recognize.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, it just, you know, I, I certainly support the drug courting, uh, additional. I mean, that's what was in the vetoed bill. It recognized the need, and we worked together to try and find and fund that, Madam Speaker. But to tell me that in two minutes, we can go from a bill that is perfectly balanced, meets all the priorities, answers all of the problems, and when you point out one single thing that is flawed, that doesn't address an issue that we're all concerned about, in two minutes, we can get a press release from the governor, we can get a text from the governor, and he can cut anywhere. How come the governor can't do that now? How come he couldn't manage this government with the same kind of quick response? GMH is saying they're fa- facing a payless payday. MIP has not, they haven't received a pharmaceutical fund payment. Why can't the governor respond in two minutes and find the money to do that? Why? Because there's no politics involved there. Now he's playing the politics of the budget, that, that we don't even question anymore. I'm in charge of BBMR. We can't get the, the reports out. The reports have to be, to be restated every three months or so because we're not doing the reports on time. Yet we can cut a hundred thousand dollars from there and they're gonna be fine. And I now give that to the governor, they work for him. But why can't we respond to the same needs that exist right now with the same flexibility, Madam Speaker? And to tell me, with my colleagues getting up here and lecturing, you know, me, this old man in here, that I'm physically irresponsible, and yet, in one fell swoop, we can just do, without even thinking, without even knowing the answer, present something to this body and say, "I don't know what the effect is gonna be, but I trust the governor." Is that it? Is that all we're here for? So that we don't even look at it? I mean, how can somebody who said, "My God, what are we doing? Why are we doing this?" And in, in, all of a sudden says, "Hey, I'm just gonna make an amendment because the governor said, he told me so, that he can take care of it," and not even know what the effect is gonna be? I mean, it really, you know, Madam Speaker, I've been trying to be very, very calm about this whole thing. I've been trying to ensure that the shortfall, this bill has other shortfalls, Madam Speaker. The governor continues to, to try to pay the bond for the landfill out of the Solid Waste Fund of seven million dollars. He repeats that this year, even though the federal receiver and the judge has says, "You don't have access to that seven million dollars to pay the landfill bond." Yet in this budget bill that the governor presented, you will look in there and he continues to say, "I'm going to use seven million dollars from the Solid Waste Fund to pay the landfill, but the judge told him you can't do that." So already, we're in the hole by seven million dollars in this budget bill. Is he gonna now send a press release that he's gonna solve that problem? And, and just have the, the next one get up and say that, not knowing where the money's gonna come from? It really is a shame. If anybody's to be ashamed, that's the action to be ashamed of, that we're just going to take an order, not even from a phone call anymore, just from a press release. And not do our own job, not only do our own due diligence in here. We're not doing any due diligence anymore, we're just taking an order. So, Madam Speaker, let, let, let that occur. I support the drug courts. We funded the drug courts, Madam Speaker. The governor didn't. And when we point that out, all of a sudden, he's for the drug courts now. And all of a sudden, so are we, and we don't care what, what happens to, we don't care what the effect is of moving that money. We just, we're just gonna do it. How physically responsible is that?
And on the... And on the amendment, Senator Sinicola, you recognize.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, not long ago, I was scolded for trying to, I don't know, think like the Governor, I don't know. But the whole point, the whole point of everything that we're talking about here is getting us to a budget that's going to meet the needs of our people. I don't see how that kind of a conversation can be a bad thing. I don't think that that kind of a conversation and expecting all of us to do our job in that regard is a bad thing. Never have, never will. But this amendment further solidifies the whole point as to why we cannot support this The Governor, with his heavy hand, and all the pressure that he's trying to put to get his way again, has his press release machine on full swing with an email that went out that said, and I'll quote, "The latest round of political grandstanding came from Senator Mike Sinicola, Oversight Chairman for the Department of Revenue and Taxation. He made multiple accusations..."
Point of order, Madam Speaker. Point of order, please. We're talking on the amendment. We're not talking about, this has anything to do with the amendment that he's supposed to be speaking on?
Madam Speaker, if I'm allowed to actually complete my dialogue...
If you allow him to continue with his dialogue, you will get to the point.
Let me begin again. Keep getting scolded. And I quote, "The latest round of political grandstanding came from Senator Mike Sinicola, Oversight Chairman for the Department of Revenue and Taxation. He made multiple accusations claiming he's opposing the latest budget bill because it will allow him to go on a hiring spree in an election year." And then he says, and I quote, "This is wholly untrue", end quote. Now, Madam Speaker, where was that $200,000 for the Governor's office going to go? Hiring? Where was that $50,000 for BBMR going to go? Hiring? I surely doubt it was going to go to paper clips. Where was that $96,000 of the Bureau of Statistics and Plans?
Madam Speaker, point of order. This is not talking about the amendment. This is an amendment.
Senator, please, you're out of order, okay? So, and he's speaking to the amendment because he talked about the $200,000 that was coming from the Governor's office, so please just sit back and listen.
I haven't heard drug court one time. I haven't heard drug court one time, and that's the amendment, Madam Speaker.
He's talking about the dollar amount, so you're out of order, Senator.
Madam Speaker, I just asked my colleagues, you allow me to talk. I mean, really. That $200,000, that $50,000, that $96,000, for a total of $344,000, that is the amendment. That is what we're talking about. Why is there such a sudden urge to make me be quiet in here? Why are we being so unfair? Why are we being so heavy-handed? Madam Speaker, that $200,000 to the Governor's office, was that for hiring? Was the $50,000 for BBMR for hiring? The $96,000 to BSP for hiring? Again, I doubt it's for paper clips. But we can all of a sudden find that money because we want to satisfy the court? What else in this bill that we just got hours ago is going to go for the hiring spree that we can actually take back and put towards the hay, put towards the COLA? In a matter of minutes, we found $344,000. Just because this budget is constructed in a way that's going to satisfy somebody who's going to send out so many emails and make so many phone calls, and get me scolded, and get me told to be quiet so many times when it's really, truly germane, this isn't about what any one person wants. This is about what's good for our people. This is the people's budget. So this amendment, Madam Speaker, reflects exactly why we cannot pass this bill. Because it sets all the wrong priorities. And it's got to be the wrong priorities if we can so quickly take from here, take from there, and take from another place in order to satisfy a question. There are so many questions. And there are so many other priorities. And we need to be more collegial in here and stop trying to walk out and shut people up. And we need to actually get down to the business of putting the money to work for our people. And you can send out another email on that if you'd like. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the amendment, Senator Duñez, you recognize.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I have to clear this up for my colleagues, since the comment was just made. Terms of why the folks on this side of the aisle decided to walk out is because we believed that that was an inappropriate carriage, carrying out of the legislature's responsibility to address the Governor's call to session. Just want to make sure that's clear on the record. Madam Speaker, I find it interesting. For almost three years now, in this body that I've participated in, we have bills before us. We sit down and we do the so-called due diligence and the work. You ruled from the chair, Madam Speaker. If you want to find appropriations, got to find, if you want to move money, you want to increase somewhere, find it. The Governor's office, from the Governor's office, $200,000. I'm sure that, obviously through the press releases they're watching, they know where some of their flexibility is. We give the Governor transfer authority. But just to try to address here, you know, say, "Look, this is our commitment." And our good colleague, the Vice Speaker, and I agree with him from the bottom of his heart, in his review, just saw that and said, "I can't accept this." So we give the opportunity to do the due diligence because there's been a lot of complaining and a lot of gnashing of teeth over where we are, but there was never any movements yet. So finally, we start to get to the amendment phase, where we can address this and start moving money around, which the Governor really could do on his own. And by the way, there's an increase in operations in the judiciary, but I don't want to touch that either. You know, maybe that's not their discretion at this point because they need that money for operations, and I agree. But I'm kind of taken aback, Madam Speaker, that we think about getting to the work here of doing what we normally do with bills and taking your instructions and finding the money, and then all of a sudden, oh, no. That's a bad way to do this. That means the budget's flawed. Because we want to get to work here. Madam Speaker, I certainly rise in a little bit of confusion, but most certainly in support of the efforts of the good Senator from Timuning. I think he's on the right track, and I guess if we don't want to propose amendments, we can just stand up and complain and then get to the end and see what we're going to do about voting. But I don't think that's the right process, Madam Speaker. That has not been my experience in the last three years here. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Senator Yamashita, you recognize. On the amendment.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, you know, I'm not quite sure how we're proceeding with this, the whole process. And I don't know if we're coming in tomorrow to go into further detail. And so I was unsure if we're going to try to cover everything today, tonight, or coming in tomorrow at 8:00 or whatever. But I do know that when the Vice Speaker did real, Madam Speaker, we all got this when you did. So it's not like we all had, you know, time to look at the details. But certainly when the Vice Speaker raised what was found on page 26, I too went to that, and I was like, "Oh, that needs to be addressed." And not only juvenile drug courts, but mental health court. And even though it's only short, $3,200, $3,190, every dollar counts in mental health court. And I suppose as a function of 2013, where we have different generations working now together, where there is now a generation of instancy, where they really immediately access information, forward information, and some of my colleagues are saying they're not getting any press releases. Well, I am. And so I'm seeing what is going out. And so I take advantage of that information flow, and I did. As soon as I saw that, I went straight back to the Vice Speaker and said, "We can address the short falls through Governor's Office, Bureau of Budget, and Statistics and Planning," understanding that the Governor would make those management decisions. And so when Senator Lempyaco proffered the amendments, I thought, "Well, that's good." And I asked that we save $4,000 for mental health court. But Madam Speaker, I don't think it's being told what to do. I think if anyone knows me even a little bit, I'm hardly the one person to be told what to do. I just, it doesn't work. If you know me professionally, you know me personally, being told what to do is not in the realm. But it is really studying and seeing what is best, and I'll talk on the main measure another time. But specifically to this amendment, it was, an issue of concern was raised. There was immediate reaction to like, "Oh, okay, that really is important and serious." And the information was provided, and the Senator from Timuning proffered the amendment. And that's all. We're just trying to address what was a void. And so that's, we're on this particular bill, the amendment was made, and that's how we're moving. So, you know, it's not, it's just what is in front of us. And if you want to talk about what was vetoed and an attempt for an override, yeah, that amount of money was there. But the measure in front of us is not that. The measure in front of us is that we're short some money. The courts ruled and said, "You need to address it." The front office said, "Hey, we can do it like this." Our Vice Speaker almost concurrently said, "We have an issue here." And then some folks raised it. That's all. And I, you know, so that's where we're at. Thank you, Madam Speaker. And I support the amendment.
You're welcome, Senator. So on the, is there anybody else who would like to speak?
Point of order, Madam Speaker?
Yes.
I'd just like to ask permission of the body to allow former Vice Speaker Ted Nelson to be in the session hall.
Okay. On that motion without any objections, order. Welcome, Vice Speaker Nelson. So is there anybody else who would like to speak on the amendment? There being none, then Senator Lempyaco, you may close.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, Madam Speaker, if, you know, I was too busy trying to communicate my thoughts to this body and not be able to check a press release on my phone. I'm not sure what press release everybody's speaking about. But this is not the first time that I have yielded to the Vice Speaker's concern, because I respect him highly. We had this same type of realization by listening to the Vice Speaker when we were discussing the Three Strikes Bill. And we had a recess so that we could stop and address some valid concerns. He had a valid concern here, and all we're trying to do is reach across the aisle to address it. And yet, I get jumped on for whatever reason. But that's neither here nor there. I'd rather just move on and vote for it, because it's through him having the knowledge of this area that he points out the flaws in the budget, and we've addressed them. So let's vote on the bill. Let's give the juvenile court the money that they need.
Senator, before you sit, I want to make sure that the amount is correct. You said $344,000 to increase it by that dollar amount, $200,000 is from the Governor's budget, $50,000 from BBMR, and you said $96,000?
Yeah. Madam Speaker, it hit at $346,000. $346,000 is a total.
Oh, so $346,000, not $344,000.
Yes. And then comprised of those, the makeup of those numbers.
Okay.
$200,000 from the Governor's budget, $50,000 from BBMR, and $96,000 from Bureau of Statistics and Plans.
All right. So on the amendment, amendment, no objections. Okay, sort of.
And Madam Speaker, just speaking on the main motion and just closing.
Oh, you're done? On the main now? Wait, okay, wait, let me check first. Who else is on the list?
I'm just finishing up.
Oh, no, you're right. I do have, you spoke in the main motion earlier.
I still have the floor, Madam Speaker.
Wait, 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 wait. Let me just double-check, okay, because... Yes, you did. You spoke in the main motion, and I know, and I had...
I think we're going to vote.
Okay. All right, I'm sorry.
Another point of order, Madam Speaker?
Please state your point of order.
I also, not that she's requested, but I also want to ask for permission for Senator Telategui to have access to the floor and to observe these discussions from the back of the room.
On that motion, objections, order. Okay, Senator, yes, Lempyaco, you may continue.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, this amendment that was just made was in light of the Vice Speaker pointing out some concerns and addressing them. But that's not the only time that it's been addressed in this new budget. The increase in Department of Education, that's largely a representation of what you and Senator Yamashita worked tirelessly to try and promote, and what a lot of us campaigned on. But you too specifically have the knowledge base regarding Department of Education, and there's an increase in that budget. The VA, Senator Tom Attah and Senator Tony Attah, they share a passion and concern for that, and there's an increase, much like what the substitute bill provided as well. We recognized that that was the right thing to do, and we reached across the aisle and did that. Senator Rodriguez, who chairs the Healthcare Committee, he had his concerns, and we addressed it. $3.6 million to Medicaid, which would result in a total of $7.2 with federal matching funds. So, Madam Speaker, this is a budget that is attempting to reach across the aisle and come to some sort of an agreement. It's not just one side or the other. And I would urge my colleagues to please support it. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. So on the main motion, Senator Tony Attah, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, Madam Speaker, I've been sitting and listening to all the debates and everything that's been going on for the last couple of hours. You know, Madam Speaker, yes, maybe Bill 13-SS may not be the perfect bill, but there's never a perfect bill. If you really come to think about it, this is actually the fourth version of the budget bill. The Governor's original submittal, the substitution made by the committee, the substitution made in the committee of the whole, and now this. You know, I come to realize that in the years that I've been privileged to sit in this session hall, that we can't please everyone all the time. We can't please every agency. Every year that goes by, budgets are different because that's just the way they are. We look at things for what they are at the moment in time. I've heard a lot about employment, you know, we'll be hiring, hiring, hiring. Of course, you need to hire police officers. You need to address the shortages of nurses, the victims' advocate, the prosecutors. I mean, we're doing a little bit of something for a majority of our population. Is it perfect? No, it's not. But when you got meals for our elderly that's going to be given to them on the weekends, or in-home services, or in-home care for those that can't care for themselves at times? at times, you know, we speak about all these things. And I hope that my colleagues, they, you know, I take it that I'm the most senior Republican on this floor, and we always look to guidance to our colleagues on the other side of the aisle, because they're very seniority to us in length of time, of service committed to our island, to our people. And when we look at that, we always take into consideration, I don't think you have ever heard much argument from us, but whenever you get backed up into a wall, naturally you have to always come out for what you believe in. And yes, the budget doesn't address everything, but at least a little bit of something to everyone. You know, we spoke about the retired, the COLA for the retirees, and I recognize the vice speaker Ted Nelson on the floor here, and former Senator Teal Tidaway. And with vice speaker being a retiree, I know he understands the position that this body is in. I know he understands that, yes, you know, we deserve those raises. We deserve to get back to the level that we were at. But he's a man of compassion, he's a man of understanding, and he knows that we, they, we can't give it all. I met last week with the retirees that were inside the public hearing room, and even with them, they said, "Senator, we understand, but please, please do what you can, because we're not greedy. We like a little bit of something, because it's better than nothing." I've heard from GovGuam employees out there about the hay raise, and they too understand.
Madam Speaker, point of, I don't know if I should say personal privilege, because it's not against me, but if the good retiring speaker is speaking on behalf of the vice speaker, maybe we should just give him the privilege of the floor and ask him. I just don't think it's fair that you would speak on his behalf and not let him speak on his own.
Thank you.
Just to ensure that we're characterizing the position of the vice speaker correctly. I just don't think that that's fair.
So Senator, when you say, in general, maybe about retirees, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Madam Speaker, I have a point of information also that would just probably resolve this whole debate as to what the retirees are thinking and how they're feeling about this issue. They had a meeting last weekend, I believe, and their position was they would really, really want the entire amount, and they're not going to settle for anything less, particularly in light of all these press announcements from the administration that the economy is strong and...
Madam Speaker, I was speaking through the conversations with, and I spoke to the vice speaker personally, and I spoke to other individuals personally, and that's why I'm speaking to it on the floor.
You may continue.
And I understand the position of the senator from Baragada, the senator from Agania Heights. But we're gonna go down this road, whether this bill gets voted on or not, if it gets, if it gets voted down, we'll be here again tomorrow, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday. Is that what really the people want to see? It's not the magic bullet to everything. And you know, I learned that, I learned that right here in this hall, that the bills are never a magic bullet for everything. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. Is there anybody else who would like to speak who have not spoken? Senator Yamashita, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I start, I shared some of my thoughts earlier when I was speaking to an amendment, and not to repeat and repeat, I simply wanted to say that I think, as this is our fourth attempt at a budget bill for this particular fiscal year, I listened a lot to everybody who was constructing the budget, and I listened to different people, and I walked away with believing that we needed to make steady progress in the health finances of our government, and I believed that we could phase in the hay, and that we can bring our seniors up to 1,500, of which the seniors that I did speak with were very, very appreciative of anything, understanding we wish we could give them everything, but also understanding that they understood that we needed to ensure that public health and GPD and GFD and our hospital had some money as well, so that when they had to access those services, that perhaps they would be able to find what they needed there. So that was the whole picture, and I thought, you know, we can move forward. And so, again, not to reiterate and repeat what I think has been said by just about every single one of us, it is an opportunity to, what our job now is to work together, to do what we need to do to support the government operations. And so I'm not sure how we're proceeding or what we're gonna be doing, but that's my mindset. How are we gonna get to where we need to get to do that? Madam Speaker, there is an amendment I'd like to proffer, and that was to move another 4,000 from Bureau Statistics and Planning to the Mental Health Court.
So the amendment is to deappropriate 4,000?
4,000.
4,000, 4,000, okay, from...
Bureau Stat...
BSP to the Mental Health Court.
And the Mental Health Court is found on page 26, and I am, that was a part of the, of, yes, the press release and then the dialogue, but we were told that that would, as soon as the issue was raised about adult and juvenile drug court, again, as I said, when I looked at Mental Health Court, that was shorted about, almost 4,000. And so that was something that we would like to, you know, address.
Thank you, Senator. So on that amendment, no objections? Sort of. Thank you, Senator. Is there anybody else who have not spoken who would like to speak? Senator Rodriguez, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'm not too sure how this attempt by us to try to pass a budget will end up. However, you know, I must say that with the budget bill that we passed here, we tried to get an override, there were some very good, some good elements provisions to that budget bill, and I recognize, and I thank as well the governor for, when he submitted, he kept most of those provisions intact. One of them, we've heard our other colleagues speak about, is the Medicaid program. He kept our efforts here to give them additional monies intact, and as a matter of fact, increased it by a few hundred thousand. However, Madam Speaker, one of the things I would really would like to talk about here and ask my, our fellow colleagues in here and our fellow elected leaders, is that whatever happens to this particular bill in front of us today, I think we need to take a step back. You know, all the things we've talked about, we want to fund hay, we want to fund, we want to bring our retirees' cost of living allowance back to 1,800, which I wholeheartedly agree with. I spoke to them as well, spoke to our government employees who need to get their due compensations. But Madam Speaker, all these things, we know are very important and critical, but are these, you know, we need to ask ourselves, we need to face reality, because despite knowing that these are all obligations we must, we must fulfill, not mentioning even the others, the merit bonuses for the judiciary, DOE, law enforcement increments, Madam Speaker, we have shortfalls today in our healthcare system. That's something I can speak, you know, very openly about, but we know we also have shortfalls in education. Of course, we've tried our best. The budget we've passed was a budget that, you know, we felt that our education department can fully, can function on. But Madam Speaker, when we say we're going to do all these other obligations, the pay raises, the increase in COLA, we need to think about the realities. Couple times, Madam Speaker, I've been invited to several schools, you know, during their career day, or, you know, just being invited to classrooms, and I won't forget this one experience I had, or two experiences, is that when I'm invited to the classrooms and supposed to interact with the students, Madam Speaker, it's the teachers that come in, you know, from other grades. They're the ones who are speaking and having that dialogue with me when it's supposed to be the students. And you know what? I, you know, I agree, I, you know, I obliged to have that dialogue with them, but what they're telling me is very different from what we're hearing. You know, they, you know, they're telling us that up to this point, the textbooks, they're not getting the adequate textbooks, the supplies in the classrooms, they're not getting it. And it's a very different picture from what we hear constantly being put out there, you know, and different picture from what, you know, we're attempting to do as well. You know, we're attempting to say, "Okay, we gotta fulfill these obligations today." So, Madam Speaker, I'm appealing to my, you know, to our colleagues in here and to all our fellow leaders, is that once we're done with this, and I, you know, we're perhaps gonna need to be here again and work, roll up our sleeves once more, is that we take a step back and really look at what we're trying to do, and look at the realities. Come January, come January next year, Madam Speaker, the threshold, the federal poverty level is gonna increase to 133%, which means more of our people are gonna be, are gonna be able to qualify for the Medicaid program. We have not even gone down that road and say, "We need to have more funds set aside to ensure that when our people are eligible to avail of this program, that we're gonna have the funds there." And so, Madam Speaker, we have to do our work in here as well. And so, again, just gonna ask that we step back and look at what the realities are, what we need to do to ensure that our people, our government is operating to serve the people. You know, before entering, before entering public office, my wife and I had a small business. It was, it was in tourism, and we struggled, you know, and, you know, but a lot of times during that times of our struggles, you know, I remember seeing news reports, you know, that tourist arrivals are up, we're getting more tourists on island. But us small, small people, the small business owners, you know, we say, "Gosh, it sounds good, you know. Our government is touting this, you know, this progress, but it's not being felt." And I'm sure that these fellow small business owners of mine today, if you go out there and talk to them, they're still struggling. And so it's really mixed messages that, you know, that we're sending out there. And so I'm just asking again, and I'll close now, that once this is over, we take a step back and look at the realities. Look at what is really happening today. Are we really taking care of our priorities? Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the main motion, anybody else? There being none, then Senator Duñez, you may close.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I think with the exception of just wanting to point one thing out, how proud I am of my good colleagues who, on our side of the aisle, that are new to this process. And I'm proud of everybody, really. I just, I just think they eloquently stated their position in the short time we've had to review. I think to add to anything that's been put out there would just be a disservice to this great dialogue that has gone on, Madam Speaker. So I move that the bill be sent down, and I would like to also call the question.
On the motion then to send the bill number 1-3-S, that's a third reading file without any objections, so order. Okay, so everybody's here. So we'll go down to the voting file, and I'd like to ask the clerk to please read the title of the bill.
Bill number 1-3-S, introduced by Committee on Rules, Federal, Foreign, and Migration Affairs, Human and Natural Resources, and Election Reform by request of Imago La Hain Guahan, the Governor of Guam, in accordance with the Organics Act of Guam, an act making appropriations for the operations of the executive branch of the Government of Guam for fiscal year ending September 30th, 2014, making other appropriations and establishing miscellaneous and administrative provisions.
Senator Tom Ada.
Hello.
Senator Tom Ada, nay. Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Ugin.
Senator Ugin, excused.
Vice Speaker Cruz.
Nay.
Vice Speaker Cruz, nay. Senator Duñez.
Nay.
Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Lim Tiako.
Aye.
Senator Lim Tiako, aye. Senator McCready.
Nay.
Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munya Barnes.
Nay.
Senator Munya Barnes, nay. Senator Pangolinan.
Aye.
Senator Pangolinan, nay. Senator Rispisho.
Nay.
Senator Rispisho, nay. Senator Rodriguez.
Pass.
Senator Siniklis.
Nay.
Senator Siniklis, nay. Speaker Wampat.
Speaker Wampat, nay. Senator Yamashita.
Senator Yamashita, aye.
Senator Rodriguez.
Senator Rodriguez, pass.
Senator Rodriguez.
Senator Rodriguez, nay.
Bill number 1-3-S received six yea votes, eight nay votes, and one excused absence. Bill number 1-3-S failed to get the required votes. Senator Rispisho, recognize.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move that we adjourn this third special session synodai, and that we revert back to the regular session that you called earlier.
My motion, so order. Okay, so we're back to our regular session. Senator Rispisho, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move that we recess till 9:00 AM tomorrow.
We will recess until 9:00 AM tomorrow morning.